Uh two. H County zoning board of appeals. I'll call up. Leading to order and I'll, I'll note that all members are present in person. We are one member. Short, so there are six of us. And I will avoid calling the role, indicate that there's no public comment to be heard and no minutes to be approved. Which takes us to our. About zoning hearings. The only. Item on the agenda is Z twenty five oh thirty five, it's Hannah's Wheaton LLC petition. This is a conditional use to allow a video gaming cafe restaurant in a B one local business zoning district. And secondly, a variation to allow a video gaming cafe restaurant to be located less than one thousand feet. From a place of assembly. Use. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on June nine, twenty twenty five. Uh we have a Milton township case here. And uh we have no objections or comments from any of the authorities to whom we've. Circulated the petition. Uh with the exception of uh the city of Wheaton, it was filed a letter. An objection, but I was told that that is not. Does not constitute a formal objection, nonetheless. It's an objection from the. City of Wheaton. And I have uh. Survey is a. Petition is exhibit one and I'll let the petitioner. Uh introduce the remaining exhibits as the case proceeds. I'm now recommending Mr. Luke Hans on behalf of petitioner. And can you? Don't find any witnesses and then everybody will be suspended.
Uh, no, Luke, go ahead. Chief, let me. You just sound, want to raise your hand, please? You just sound like a square firm in the testimony about to give at this cause now in here and. Hope you the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So, thank you again.
Are they using my pencil tip to? Not there. I'm trying to be very loud, isn't it? What's easier for you? Well, go ahead, just speak out if you can, obviously.
I'll let you.
Y'all, I mean, I'm hearing you. I'm talking more closer, how's that?
Sounds good.
Okay, for the record, Phil Luke Hans has the F of the Candace Wheat LLC. Uh. Have a probably number of attendance, which I'll talk about real quickly to spell record. Number one is the plan survey, two is a tax bill, just showing ownership. Three is the authorization letter from the owner, four is a lease. Five is an aerial. Uh which I have larger scot, which we talked about six is. The uh. Six gives a uh. Municipal zoning, municipal map. Talk about that as well. Seven's a. Form of the platypus, we'll talk about that. Eight, nine are photographs and ten is the narrative. Which I will go through word for word, but kind of. Summarize to the best I can. Um. This project is supposed to be located in the P one. Local business district in existing retail center. He's also certain, watch us. Is something. You have it all from the best, the aerials exhibit five. Uh. It's on the southwest corner of Pleasant Hill and Geneva Road and unincorporated Wheat. Candace is proposing a condition of use for a video gaming cafe restaurant for the subject property, a single variation. Is sought to allow it to be located less than a thousand. Feet from a place of assembly. In this case, the place of assembly is the Pleasant Hill Community Church. Um subject property currently has ten existing users and was anchored by a liquor store on the east side of the park. So. Right here is the shopping center, strip center, this is Pleasant Hill, Geneva. You have strip center here, strip center there, blue strip center. And on the northeast corner, or northwest corner. You have a law. That used to be a something to do as old as I am and living in the neighborhood growing up, that was the Pleasant Hill school. It got moved, uh probably twenty years ago. So, uh. Other than those uses, and I'm sorry, and here is the church. Uh further to the west, actually, you were wrong. The uh other than that, it's primarily a residential neighborhood, no doubt about it, it's unincorporated, all around it. It is. At least all around, as far as should say. Stuff on the north side of the road, the commercial stuff is in midfield. You look to. Exhibit. Six. We'll see the zoning map. Uh this will be a little more important as it comes to the week. But exhibit six, you'll see an X. Which is the location of the strip center. The blue. Is midfield, city limits. And. I guess that's pink, I'm not really sure, because Wheaton, you can see the label and the color, then Carroll Street kind of comes in at the more east. Uh. We're talking about more, but Wheaton's like, see Wheaton is, while they are objecting. Uh. They are over a half mile away from the actual location. So, uh. While they're checking, it shows it. So, the subject property, as it said, currently has ten users. This space seeking to utilize the far west end. And is approximately twenty four hundred fifty five square feet. That space previously was occupied by a dry cleaner and it's been vacant for about five. Uh across the street beside Walgreens, the other kind of more intense uses is there is. Uh. A restaurant, Italian restaurant spread across the street. So, it's, you know, it's, it's an area that's kind of changed over the years, we'll talk about this as well. The subject property will remain in compliance with the perky requirements and other requirements in the DuPage County zoning ordinance. The applicant is our experienced gaming operators and have two existing similar cafes to what is being hoped, running on Dell Heights. One, I believe, in Melrose Park. Cafe would be open from approximately nine AM until midnight. Uh. And only has six video gaming rooms, so it'll generate less traffic. Than the other possible branded commercial B one uses such as retail sales, restaurants, food stores. Office supply stores, paint stores, beauty parlors, dry cleaning, laundry, currency exchange, repair shops, oil wells, and many more. Much more intense uses from traffic and. From people to stand like a bandit. Uh. The cafe would serve food and liquor, we're going to hear that is what they're considering just a little bit of sales. Uh however, it's important to note that alcohol sales of these types of places are very good, it's not like. You're not sitting there for hours drinking or eating. Uh. It's mostly beer and wine. The average sales to either two stores range between fifty to a hundred dollars a day. So, we're talking. You know. Ten to twenty drinks to a twelve, fourteen. This is not heavily, this is some of them. That's not the kind of clientele you get. Uh if you want to do that, you go to a bar and sit at the video game, so drink. It's not what we're looking at here, as we know, all these places have, a lot of the unincorporated bars now have. Now have video. To incorporate. Uh the majority of customers are not drinking alcohol beverages. And it's not the kind of use for people sitting in a cafe for hours in that. The main ingress and ebb. And it's quite better on the survey, it shows up a little better in the survey, exhibit one. You will see that the main ingress and ebb is obviously in Geneva Road. That is the main thoroughfare district. On the east side of the road is Pleasant Hill. Relatively busy, not as busy as Geneva, Geneva's five lanes throughout this area. And then on the west side, you have a little street called Delano, D E L A N O. Uh. Which. You can turn right or left on both there or on Pleasant Hill. If you turn right on the Delano, you go straight to Geneva, if you turn left, you go, you go through the residential. Uh. The advocate to, however, to avoid that. To avoid someone coming left. Out of the retailers, out of the strip center. And going through this neighborhood directly. We're proposing a no left turn. Restrict access, so you cannot go south. On Delano. And into this neighborhood. Uh direct now. Even wants to go in the neighborhood, they obviously can, but. Uh that at least limit the amount of people coming out of our establishment into that, directly into that neighborhood. It goes south. There's really not a lot of reason for anyone to go south into that neighborhood. It's obviously easier to go off plus to Geneva or Pleasant Hill. Uh those are much more. Direct thoroughfares in this neighborhood than is Delano, Delano is, uh sure you hear. Is a older. Residential subdivision goes up to that area. There are no, for the most part, I don't believe there's sidewalks. You know, I'm sure there are kids playing in the street, I think that, I lived, I grew up three blocks from there and I can promise you I was playing in the street and here, that's what we did, right? Uh the fact that I walked down Pleasant Hill. Road every day to go to school. Just, school now is about. Probably half mile to the north of the prior locations, it's awesome, I think, a little. It's near the Klein Creek entrance of the law. Uh this proposed conditional use meets the standards, the DuPage County zoning ordinances, we'll talk about in a second. Uh. Again, this is at least. We have both conditional use to variation, the conditional uses. Uh driven by a little word case, talked about it a number of times over the years, or I don't mean to bore you with it again. And I have a slightly small analysis in the narrative, which is. Uh that presumption that the living word can only be overcome by a clear and convincing evidence standard. With the grand and special use, the use will result in real or substantial harm to the public face, health, safety, and levels of welfare. Here, I submit there cannot be any clear and convincing evidence that in regard to overcome the presumption. Initial use standards, one is in harmony with the general purpose of the town of the chapter, will not be injurious to the neighborhood, touching on the public roof or in conflict with the county's comprehensive plan for building. As you can see on the barrel, what you have in front of you and down here in exhibit five. Both. As I said, both use is B one local business district, the DuPage County zoning ordinances. And is according to the zoo, the appropriate use for the area under little word. I've already talked about what's in the neighborhood. Uh and the Pleasant Hill Community Church itself. It's approximately seven hundred feet from our use, our proposals. Standard is a thousand feet, we talked about that. Um two, will not fair and adequate supply of light and or air to adjacent property and that existing type of building is not changing, it's an existing long story building. It's been around. Shoot, twenty five, thirty years at least. So, the city, there's no ways this use, an existing building will pair with. Light and air to the adjacent property. Well, uh the question next is, will it diminish the value of land and building in the vicinity of the proposed conditional use? Um this proposed development is already on a major roadway, it's a county road. And is shown by the fact that the county includes restaurants and video cafe games to be conditional uses, recurring in the face to be conditional uses. The county has determined that this use is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood slash uses. Uh accordingly, because it is consistent with those uses, there will be no diminution of value of land in the surrounding parts. Four, will not unduly increase traffic congestion with public streets and highways. As discussed earlier, this is not a high intensity use, especially compared to the other permitted uses to be on local business district. A restriction not allowing left turns on the Delano will also push traffic on the main traffic arterials of Geneva and Pleasant Hill roads. To keep people leaving. All of the uses of the subject property, not just the video gaming cafe, turning into the residential area. People who are coming and living in that area to the south, using this facility. They're really not going to have to go very far. Out of their way to get back to their homes if they still come from, because Pleasant Hill is right there. And so. Shoot, it's two hundred yards, it's two hundred, it's two hundred yards between them, sorry. Uh. The number five, it will not increase the potential for flood damages to adjacent property, obviously already this is existing. The impervious systems, impervious service is not changing, there will be no additional stormwater. And this will not create any additional flooding of the area. Six, will not incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue, or relief. Uh the use shall not create an additional burden for fire protection, rescue, or relief. And then it will apply with all buildings, fire codes, and so many. Rightly, they will have to, they will have to sprinkle this particular space when to choose. So, uh. Finally, number seven. It will not otherwise impair the public health, safety, and levels of welfare, morals, and general welfare that you have in DuPage County. Uh. Actions. Will be undertaken to ensure that such a property should not impair public health safety under. This is. You know, some people have problems with the morals of gaming. I don't, this county has determined that that is not a concern anymore. Uh. Eight years ago, seven years, however long ago it was, they changed that, so this, and there's no public health concerns here. The only concern, the no one concern shifts the one concern, is obviously people are coming out of this facility, turning left on the Delano and ending the neighborhood. After a few cocktails. That's what we're trying to avoid to that aspect of my generation, so the people have to go off. Uh. In so, this project meets the standards for a conditional use and the ordinance. And is presumably acceptable to the board. As I said earlier, as Mr. Carthel said. The open hearing. This project also needs a variation, because it's not a thousand feet from the place. Uh the building itself is approximately seven hundred feet from the Pleasant Hill Community Church building. Uh as you know, variation and conditional use standards and the ordinance are similar, except for the need to show hardship or special circumstances for variations. See, all of the things we showed as conditional use are pretty much the same standards for variation, except we have to have, show hardship or special circumstances. Uh while Pleasant Hill Community Church is clearly a place of something in the DuPage County zone. It's a relatively modest church and it's too exciting. Um. And I made a mistake, maybe we spoke, because I. You know, so I, memory are not what they once were, I spoke to one of the pastor and I think he said seven, I think he said seven, five fingers. Our members must change. If I'm wrong, I'm sure I can. Um it also appears that there are two churches, at least there's a main church, which is Pleasant Hill Community Church, or the one that's got the name on the sign. It appears that two, that there are two churches for sharing this. The church of the Savior meets on Saturday evenings. And Pleasant Hill Community Church also normally has one service a week, which is at ten AM Sunday. Does not have school. Uh it appears that neither congregation is large enough, parish nurse, and neither has a building for us, neither uses the building for the school. The Geneva Road corridor in this area has been slowly changing from purely residential neighborhood to a more detailed. If you look at exhibit six, you will see that midfield has. Uh. Kind of expanded down. Pleasant Hill. From the north. To take in this area and commercial uses. All three uses, I believe, on the north side and Pleasant Hill and. North east side, northwest side, excuse me, Pleasant Hill and Geneva are all in midfield. In the building directly to the. West of us. Which contains workout facility, a condo place, field and places, those have also been built to the midfield. As well, newer buildings. Uh. As I said, fifty years ago, this area was, was completely residential. The only thing, the only thing that was very small. Very small neighborhood store. Probably four hundred square feet. It's cool. It's cool, because the moon. parish use system. Uh. Also, those areas, those stop, those areas with the stoplight near here. Uh County Farm in Geneva, obviously. Much commercial, much longer strip mall that area. The office building, that's the east corner. You have to the east. You have, uh. Geneva Gary Avenue. Which is clearly all commercial. Strip malls, but I haven't, I'm wrong. That's, you have two gas stations at that corner. And retail, retail section, service buildings. Section. Uh. City Wheaton appeared has filed a list. Letter objecting. And the city seems to base its specific objection, within the general objection says the any variation. And both morals, public health, safety, welfare, that was specifics. On the fact that there will be two gaming establishments on the subject property. As the liquor store and the bar at East End. Appears to also want to seek approval for the video. Uh. I would, however. First of all. That will then create, if this one was granted, they will then need variation. The two of the city. Having wrong, fifty, on fifth line. Secondly. And if you look, and you know, this is not something you really. Well, but I know, but if you look at the lease addendum. You will see that we have a exclusive for video. So that's why we. Add that, so this, this passed, thank you. This has to be looked at, it's all, as you know, not what may come in the future, that seemed to be big, Wheaton's biggest claim is. We're granting variation and now we're looking at two of the same product, well, that's not what's before you today, it's just a single known. That you'd have to deal with. Uh the issue of the lease, that's something that you always want. We got brand the applicants like. Uh.
What section is that in the lease?
It's still, it's right at the end, the next to last, the two pages.
Wait, I don't need to, okay.
Oh, that's okay, I'm strengthful, I'm almost there. It's uh yeah, second from the last page. Exclusive video gaming rights tend to show the exclusive right to operate video gaming terminals within the shop. Then word agrees another time occupant or third party with the shop center. And under land and ownership with control, should operate video games from some game tables. Uh. Given the over, and honestly, that's a private dispute of. Be cautious. I just didn't want to mention. Uh also, you have in front of you, just see on gen five. A little better than the two. Exhibit. Seven. Shows you, uh. In highlighted, it's the platypus survey, and it's got an area highlighted in yellow. That shows the initial location, proxy size of. Close use. So you have that in front of you. Exhibits eight and nine. Uh exhibit eight is. The picture of taken this morning of the entire shopping mall. I. Apologize for the angle, but if you went out straight on, you couldn't see it because of the trees, I couldn't, I can't, the picture that showed the whole film. Uh and then exhibit nine. Is a narrow view, just showing the cleaners and use next door, which is a massage. Or what used to be the cleaners, that's the current space. Who else is new? Given the over five year period, this portion of the strip center vacant. You know, it's a moderate use and shortage of proximity substance. The neighborhood changing to have more business type uses. And lack of any additional effect in the neighborhood. Special circumstances or things exist in this case. That's the. Questions left.
Okay, let me, let me first indicate that I will admit all of your exhibits. As part of the hearing record and um. You said, you testified that hours of operation are nine to midnight, uh it may be seven days, seven days a week. Twelve months a year.
Yes, and on Saturdays it may or the weekend, depends on.
All right, uh. Interesting thoughts about the. Hardship, unique circumstance, practical difficulty, support for, on the variation that Senator Torres would thought. Um okay, any questions from any member of the board?
Yeah, Carl. Just real briefly, you have a left turn. Out of the. At the Delano.
Yeah.
Um, how are you adhering to this, just to be cited, or you're going to restructure that price, that kind of term, for Geneva? At this point, we're planning to get it signed. Uh I will say that. Keep. I don't understand what happened, but if you come the other direction out of the strip mall to the west. At least until recently, there was a sign that said, go right turn out of that one, the exact same reason. I see, but I have. Last several weeks, I have, obviously, the name's gone.
Any else from the board, uh we'll take. Nothing else from you?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, we'll take comments through the audience, um I'll recognize each of you once. Committed to make a. Statement in support of or in opposition to the petition or ask questions, anybody that wants to make such a statement. Needs to be sworn in, so I'll swear everybody in at the same time that you'll all raise your hand. Those of you that wish to speak. So it's one, two, three. Again, so, no, thank you, thanks. Four, and that's it, just four people. Those two gentlemen in the back, I can't really. Wait, no, okay. Would you each stand and be sworn in?
You just sound like a square firm in the testimony about to give at this class now here and hope the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be back.
I do.
Are any of you lawyers representing a group? Are you members of any homeowners association or townships or? Everybody here is an individual neighbor of the past, or which, okay, well, to act first, must be. Someone accustomed to public speaking, so uh tell us your name and your address and uh.
My name is Scott Owingson. Uh I live in the neighborhood at Zero Ed.
Spell your last name.
H O W I N G T O A. And I live in the neighborhood in question at Zero Ed. Seven, six, four, Peter Road. And I have been the pastor of Pleasant Hill Community Church, the church in question, for nearly twenty nine years. Uh my objection to the variance is twofold, first, as is mentioned, our church, and as I understand the ordinance, size doesn't matter, it's location. And we do have a second church that meets. There is not a school, but there are times where there are vacation Bible schools, children's programs, youth programs, et cetera. Uh so that's my first objection, is just the location of our church, but secondly, we've talked about the safety of the neighborhood. And that is very important, our neighborhood is a very safe neighborhood, we do have children playing in the streets, riding their bikes, families taking strolls. People walking their, their babies, walking their pets. And because we're unincorporated, as you well know, there are no sidewalks, there are no streetlights. And so as residents, we've become very accustomed to that, and we do look out. And I am very concerned, in fact, I think in my conversation with returning, I brought up the left hand turn. Uh putting a sign that will inconvenience an entire neighborhood. Making me a scuff wall when I want to come out of the parking lot for my gin's China five ninety five lunch special and go home, eat it, and have to go around the block. I think it's just an inconvenience, and there is no way. Any authority. Can enforce that. And there's no way any authority can stop an individual who's maybe a little bit. Impaired from drinking, and now is maybe a little bit angry. That they've lost some money to a video machine and they turn left and go. I live through our neighborhood. There is no way you can stop that. So that family taking stroll. Or that friend walking home from the friend's house at night. Or that person walking their dog the last time that evening to turn in. Are all potentially at risk. So, because of the location. That involves two congregations. And the potential safety concerns in an unincorporated resident, residential neighborhood. And the potential safety concerns in an unincorporated resident, uh, residential neighborhood. I believe the post site is not the best location for this business. And so I would respectfully pass it.
Great, thank you, sir, who would like to be next?
I think I said this, but, um, the limit on, uh, public speaking is three minutes each, not a little played on that, but. No, not at all. But I was keeping time and I thought, why am I keeping time, I don't think I said three minutes, it's still. Go right in.
Um, I'm president of the neighborhood I live, two rivers, um. Just south of what proposed location. And, uh, I just hear ends of five, three Delano Street. And we've been there for twenty five years, so. That the amount of business that has heard there has really not changed. There was much there when we went in and. So that's. Interesting, anyway, um, I have petitions here signed by residents of adjacent neighborhood, residential residents and so. Church, um, all of them are against. Does follow me. Red lights for that, and also that is speaking. Uh, I do not believe this bar is an appropriate situation. So within a quarter mile of the elementary school, they're actually walking from the elementary school, running a basis. The official is supposed to take the bus, but very often. They have churches and community parks, falls to. Nightmare, it's not industrial. As I mentioned, there are not sign marks. Just walkers. And even when we want to work out, we'll run something that. So, um, I'm obviously concerned about traffic, maybe left and turn. No left entrance. So my parent. They were taxed, the plaza and children will often walk. Um, through that area and cross into the plaza or plus Pleasant Hill. Right there, so there's, there's a lot of full traffic, then it's actually. So, um, there are at least six other. Some of you may be aware, the surveys done of crisis of the board and after gambling establishments. Uh, have consistently shows.
You speak up a little bit, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, surveys done at home prices, before and after gambling establishments have opened consistently show a significant drop in prices. Just to say that is also a concern to residents, but honestly, as a parent who has nine kids. Um, in the neighborhood, there are a lot of homeschoolers who are home during the day. And there's just a lot of. It's just a, a lot of people who are there who are walking, this is just.
Okay, thank you. I see your petition.
Oh, I'm sorry, I T A N O, I T A N O.
You'll do it to form, usually I'll take, correct?
Um, well, I didn't. So I learned how to do it, right?
You'd like to be next, sir?
Could we hold my three minutes till I answer?
No, but you can ask.
Asking some questions, I will ask.
Can you tell me who your name is first of all?
John Doyle, D O Y L E. I live at zero N, seven, seven, one Delano. Immediately to the south of the shopping center. So the question is, you told us who's Matt. And this, these establishments. That, uh, they don't drink all day, it's not like going to a bar, well, who is your customer? What's the name of that? So we don't know that, well, we, from what we know. I really don't know who's coming here. But we might assume that, uh, because we're here tonight, there's a risky behavior that we're concerned about. So I put together a letter here, which I'll read to you, and I'll try to make it under three minutes. Uh, I guess I must be behind the times because I thought a thousand foot mark was already. Highlighted, so it wasn't in there, but apparently it is. So. The proposed amendment will change the minimum separation for video gaming, now isn't it could be called video gambling? And that's all. The ordinance is part of the rule. All right, but isn't it video game? Yeah, there's anything you people know, because I see a lot of white hair around here, people who have been addicted to gambling. We also have seen people who are addicted to alcohol. And it's not a pretty thing. No, it doesn't happen all the time, but it happens enough. That all of a sudden, these are people who are coming out of this place that you can't control, they can't control. A friend of mine just recently lost. Twenty one year old son. With motorcycle accident. And I don't know if he was on drugs or not, but it's just like, these things happen. At any time. So. And it, and unfortunate thing is not only did he die, the sixteen year old girl who was driving a car died. So. I can't forget something. Anyway, proposed amendment, thousand feet. So grateful business owners may provide financial support for cooperating collective officials, that's the only benefit I can see out of this. The people who vote positive, I vote for it, oh, eventually, I'm thinking, well, maybe they'll donate to my campaign. What else could there be in this, I don't know. I look to say. What's, what's going to be better after this is approved? You can have a better community. Is my value of my house going up? I'd wager, no, and wager goes the other way, which does previously mention. Proponents of the change suggest that underfoot separation from churches. Protection from possible negative effects of these activities on children, the disabled, those who are prone to addiction. Churchgoers and property owners. Property owners may not experience a lower poverty level till they sell their property. But I don't hear anybody saying, well, we're gonna, you're risky business in your neighborhood. You've got a country tax, it's a thousand dollars, oh. I don't see that ever. So the people who are taking the burden of this use, it's us, the property, not these. Now, are you telling me that they can't find other tenants? But this, you mentioned that there's two other strip shopping centers that just went up not too long ago. How come you didn't get those tenants before they got? I mean, this is a real estate game, you're big guys, you ought to know what you're doing now. So I got no sympathy for people who can't rent out their spaces. And say that, oh, we gotta end video gaming. They're even the property owners, that's all I got to say, all right, now the loss of characters for the community is what we've seen in. Chicago, San Francisco, Los Angeles, all these other places where all of a sudden you got almost population. I seen the people over there, they had the, uh. Health club in the old Diamondex location. And two people camping out there. And another person camping out at the National Memorial. That they had up there on. So. The people who are, I'll say attracted to this. Are happy to drink and gamble are not the people that we think that we want to be neighbors with. So. At the moment, that's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric, do you want to make your, uh, write-up, uh, an exhibit?
Uh, sure, there's enough copies here for everybody, plus.
Okay, we'll take that as Doyle exhibit number one. Thank you, then the last speaker. Thanks.
Hello, everyone, uh, my name is Toby Ito, um, I live at zero N, seven, five, three, Delano, um, two houses down from this property. Uh, my comments are gonna be released, hopefully you can, I have just a couple things I want to say. And that is that, you know, I'm a fifty year resident of DuPage, Happy Valley, DuPage. Um, I worked at that Pleasant Hill School that was on the corner, um. That, uh, the attorney figures they mentioned, and a former trustee of the church, uh, of the community church and all. Um, and I guess I would just ask in these respective their wishes, uh, in the survey, uh, or in the, uh. Questionnaire or, I'm sorry, the, uh. Issue, mission, thank you, uh, petition that, uh, both residents and the members of the church sign. Um, you know, I know there's a law of potential, uh, tax revenue that would be a part of this. And I know it's also easy to say, you know, it's not my neighborhood, so it's not really my problem, but. We are asking you to empathize with us, the residents of the, you know, of the immediate area. And just understand our, uh, concerns that we have, just as if we were in your own neighborhood. And if we're, um, established drinking and, uh, gambling establishment that was going in two doors down from Davisville. Or, um, John's case, uh, one door. Um, and I guess the other question that I have is, um, I guess, are we asked, are we saying that there is some undue hardship of. Having to drive an extra seven minutes to go to the next, uh, most sustaining gaming establishment. Uh, which is seven, seven minutes away. And thank you for listening and also for your service to the, uh, foundation.
Great, thank you, sir, uh, Mr. Lookens, you want to, uh. Uh, to the remarks from any of the neighbors, uh, suggesting additional questions from the board? Now, I'll ask Mr. Lookens to summarize.
Honestly, I don't hear much of summary. I don't think anything with.
Can you speak up?
Absolutely, that's okay. I, I don't think anything we've heard from residents changes any of that. And we would ask the, ensure the recommendation meeting.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, the next step in the process, so the record is closed now on this case. The decision will be made exclusively on the basis of the record that was made, various documents that have been submitted. Um, and, uh, the next step in the process is that this board will meet. To, um, render a vote and to have some, uh, made a discussion about the case. And, uh, that's July. What's our recommendation?
July tenth? Yes.
Uh, July tenth. At five thirty and we'll probably meet in this room.
Uh, upstairs.
No, upstairs, okay, at thirty five hundred B, right? All these pronouncements that I make, I have to look over there to find out what I'm supposed to say. Uh, so thirty five hundred B, uh, five thirty. No public comment is, uh, permitted at that stage, it's just a deliberation, a public deliberation, the board about this case and probably a couple of other cases. Then our recommendation goes to the county development committee. Uh, which will go through a similar deliberation, uh, the dates for the development committee you can obtain. Staff, uh. Representatives, development committee will then make its, uh, similar recommendation to the full county board that makes. Final administrative decision on the case. That's it, thank you very much, folks, uh. Appreciate your, uh, comments. And, uh, I particularly appreciate having an opportunity to put a time limit on a pass. My congregation does it every. So we're closed, uh, oh, no old business, no new business, and we're adjourned.